So I will now call the case of one, two, four, nine, nine, eight, and counsel may approach the lectern.
May it please the court, Linda J. Lovemeyer, on behalf of the Finney County Commission, I'd like to reserve three minutes of rebuttal.
Three minutes is reserved.
Thank you. Justices, thank you again for traveling to our southwest Kansas neck of the woods. This case boils down to the Kansas Court of Appeals. We applied for cert based on their ruling. In that case, they found themselves duty bound by what the, what, what the Finney County Commission would characterize as dicta. That dicta has repeated itself throughout a string of case law. And that dicta goes back to a case called Crumbacher. When you go back to that case, there are multiple ways to distinguish the case. First of all, that case in particular determined whether or not a municipality can bypass zoning procedures through an annexation agreement. Of course, this court ruled that it could not. And in that case, they went on to say and make the statement that the power to change the zoning of property, which includes issuing special use permits, can only be exercised in conformity with the statute. We're not asking this court to overturn that principle. Obviously, it's our contention that the Finney County zoning ordinances comply with the statute. This case never addresses specifically 12755. I think that particular statute is particularly important in this court's analysis. In that statute, it gives the municipalities, including counties, the authority to come up with a framework or procedure for issuing conditional use permits. And I don't think any of the case law, in my reading of it, has never actually addressed this issue at hand. And the specific-
Counsel, before we get into the statutes and the case law, can you address the order that we sent out a few weeks ago asking whether this case is moot? Because, you know, whether the permit is valid?
I was unaware of that. I did not see that.
Well, let's, okay. I don't know what happened, but listen, is the 2021 permit still valid under these regulations? Because as I read the regulations, it says that permits must expire after one year.
Right, so, so that, no, okay, I didn't receive that request, but I would say it isn't moot. The, those conditional use permits, as long as it goes into continuous use and as long as the, as long as the sand in this, in this particular case, the sand quarry has started its work, it stays in place. I guess that's probably at least something that may be addressed. However, this issue is going to repeat itself if the court doesn't make a ruling today or in the future with regard to this issue because Finney County still has the same zoning regulations. It still has the same procedure for issuing conditional use permits that hasn't been revoked at this time.
Well, what, what draws our attention to it? And I'm sorry you don't have this, but a lot of things have gone awry in the last couple of weeks. But I want to draw your attention, I'm sure you've got it over there, to a zoning regulation, section 28.080. And what it says is, "All conditional use permits shall be valid for one year from the date it was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. If the project has not been substantially completed within one year of approval, the conditional use permit shall expire."
All right.
To me, I read that, and that tells me that these permits have one year.
Right, but in this instance, and in several instances, they're going to be able to renew that so long as the sand quarry is still active and they haven't finished doing their quarry of that sand area. So, yes, technically it could expire. Technically, they will need to go back to the neighborhood zoning and development and reapply, or they, they may continue to need to renew that permit. But, but often, I mean, honestly, often in conditional use permits, those projects aren't necessarily finished as the, as the zoning regulations refer to. They're not, they're often not finished within a year, and that's not uncommon for that to happen in that way.
And are you suggesting then that those parties do not come back and have a renewal process?
They do have a renewal process, yes.
What happened with this 2021 permit?
With this 211, I don't have that knowledge, I apologize. I, I apologize, I didn't get the note regarding the question of its mootness, so. Nevertheless, I'll return back to Crumbacher.
Let me ask you about Crumbacher.
Sure.
You said, you know, there's that sentence in there that everybody's animated about making a reference to conditional use permits. But here's my operating theory. You say it's dicta. I'm not sure I agree with that for this reason. In Crumbacher, what the city of DeSoto did, not only was contrary to the county zoning and all that, that's why they were going through the process, but what they were trying to do actually violated their own regulations. It's the way I read that decision. It's a little subtle. But because of that, what the county, or what, I'm sorry, what the city was trying to do was completely contrary to all the procedures that had occurred prior to that. So the idea that they could circumvent it through this annexation agreement is a little odd to begin with. Plus, those, if I read the case, those regulations the city adopted required you to go back to the planning board. And that, in contrast, Finney County doesn't have that. Everything Finney County did is absolutely within the provisions of the regulations. And as I also read it, within the provisions of the statute. It's not until you try to bootleg in Crumbacher and that Manley case that the words start to morph.
Right.
At least in the view of the Court of Appeals.
Right, and, and actually, Justice Biles, I think that is a very good point in this situation because I think you can also read Crumbacher and what it says as not being dicta, but very specific to the situation that they're talking about here. And you're right, the, the heft that that particular statement was given was added on to as the case law goes on. And in the, the unpublished opinions that are cited, it, they just keep elevating those words and saying, we have long held that conditional use permits or special use permits are a zoning change. They, they inflate the actual meaning in there, which is never in statutes. 12757 never mentions conditional use permits despite the fact that the phrase was used in 755, or in, yeah, in 12755. And despite the fact that as the dissenting opinion from the appellate court points out, chapter 19 regulating counties has a statute that does require the urban counties to follow 757. And I think that's also an extremely important point here is that the legislature has required it of certain counties by statute. That, that requirement by statute is not placed upon all counties. It's, it's placed upon the urban counties, being Sedgwick and Johnson County. And so I, I wonder, and I wonder whether or not some of the cases, and especially Crumbacher and Manley, both originating out of Johnson County, in actuality, 757 does apply to their conditional use of permits. It does apply to their special use permits and the requirements. But, but the legislature and the statutes under the zoning ordinances allow for the, for each of the individual municipalities, counties, to make their own zoning ordinances and to make their own rules regarding conditional use permits. I think it's also telling or that conditional use permits, special use permits are only defined in zoning ordinances for the localities. They're not defined by statute. And so it, it's a curious conclusion for the court to come to that 757 would, and, and the, the procedure there would apply to a conditional use permit given that there's no definition, standardized definition for what that is. I just think that's an illogical conclusion. If the, if the county and the municipality are defining what it is, it seems to me that they should also have the authority and the ability, as the League of Municipalities pointed out, through home rule, they have the ability to make those rules for themselves. And in conju, in, in keeping with the spirit of the community, the, the nature of the zoning that's going on and the changes that are going on in their own locales.
Can I get a, kind of a, a big picture here of what happens with a conditional use permit in Finney County and in other counties subject to the conditional permit allowances and the rules that county set up for, for that? And that is, I'm just curious about the compatibility with what is already zoned. This, this particular parcel was zoned agriculture.
Correct.
And this conditional use was for a sand and gravel pit in operation. And it just seems so foreign to what zoning is originally contemplated for and the people that live around there. And how, and I understand it's your position that you followed your protocol of your county and that, but how much, absent the exceptions that, that conditional use permits are not permitted through statute, mining operations. This seems closer to like a mining operation to me than it does any kind of agricultural use. And is that a factor in any of this?
I think it's a factor in what the zoning regulations were and how they were designed. Obviously, the conditional use permit is allowed for the sand quarry under agricultural zoning, right? And you understand that. Maybe one of the specific geographic issues that the court should understand in Finney County and through much of southwest Kansas, the Arkansas River runs through, and that's primarily where this is close to and where it's being quarried. Those lands abut, a lot of agricultural lands. And that's where, and, and why the zoning regulations allow it in an agricultural location. So for instance, Pierceville is probably geographically, maybe even less than a mile maybe from, from where the, the river crosses. And, and primarily those sand quarries fall along that riverbed.
I have a question about regulation section 4.030, which refers to conditional uses. And it says, "The following uses and structures may be permitted, number six, state-approved and sand and gravel quarries." I'm not sure what the "and" is there for. State-approved and sand and gravel quarries? Is that an extra word? Are they supposed to be state-approved sand and gravel quarries? And if so, was this one?
I would read that as, as including a both, state-approved and. That would be how I would resolve that question is that, because any sand quarry has to be approved by the state. That's an automatic procedure that they have to go through the KDHE for, I think, for, it's the KDHE that does that and, and gives those permits for the sand quarry to continue. And so along the way on the procedure, you may have someone asking for a conditional use permit prior to actually getting their permit from the, the KDHE for the sand pit. And so maybe that's why that is. Of course, that's looking back at something that was drawn up in 1995. So I, I don't know, but that's how I would resolve that tension there. So, so I mean, if you, if you thought about it as a, as a, the sand company applying for a conditional use permit, they can apply for that conditional use permit prior to having the proper permits, but they will need to have the proper permits before they can actually exercise that conditional use.
I have one question, coming back to my earlier question about, but I want to ask it just in terms of what's actually happening as far as you know. Is the sand and gravel operation currently operational?
My memory at this point is that it is, they have not gone into Finney County. Part of that is that I think they, as we all are, are bound by the ruling from the Court of Appeals at this time. And I believe probably counsel for Huber Sand has advised them not to do that. However,
Just-
It, it, it abuts Gray County, this piece of land also. So I know that the sand quarry in Gray County, which is directly next to it, has already started and is, and is in operation.
But in Finney County, there is no operation. It's not started.
No, but, no, but the road is out there, the, the quarry equipment is out there due to it being in Gray County.
Permit beyond the 2021 permit.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
There's no permit past the 21, 2021 permit that we are currently discussing.
I, I don't have enough information to answer that question, I'm sorry.
During, during the, your time before you come back for rebuttal, why don't you take a glancing look at 28.080 in your regulations? Let me know whether you think that permit can live past one year.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
May it please the court, Patrick Edwards, on behalf of American Warrior and Brian Price. I'd like to start off by addressing a few of the questions that came up just a second ago. And the first is with respect to the court's question about whether the, the CUP in this case has expired for failing to substantially complete the project. The, the CUP was for a sand and gravel quarry. And I think it's important to know, there, there are two tracks at issue here. One is in Finney County, directly next to Pierceville. And it's literally directly next to Pierceville. And then that track directly abuts the county line to Gray County. And then right next to there, there's a Gray County parcel. The CUP in Gray County followed the correct two-part process from 757 and was granted. And so the, the sand and gravel operations currently, the actual mining is going on in, in Gray County. And to our understanding, there's been no gravel, sand or gravel mined in Finney County. There is a road that's been constructed on the Finney County tract. There's a portable office that's been placed on the Finney County tract, and they've stored some machinery and equipment on the Finney County tract. But there's been no actual mining on Finney County. The other thing is, the, the CUP, part of the, part of the conditions that the BZA imposed was that a fence with barbed wire be built on the, the outside of the tract in Finney County and that there be trees planted as well. It's our understanding that there was, you know, for a year and a day after this permit was issued, there was no, there was no fence that was constructed, no trees that were planted. And in fact, it's our understanding that just recently, within the last few months, there was a fence that was started to be built. But as part of the construction process, there was a line that was hit that ran into one of the neighbors' houses in Pierceville, a gas line. And so they stopped construction. So it's my understanding, at least, that to this day, the fence has not been completed. No trees have been planted, no sand or gravel has been mined. So it's our position that the, the permit has expired for failure to substantially complete the project as the, as the zoning regulations state.
But counsel, that, that, that strikes me as a factual question that may not be before us. I, I think my question, and maybe some of the questions I'm hearing from the other justices, is whether the permit has expired by operation of law because its term lasts only for one year. So could they begin a gravel operation tomorrow without returning for a new permit or approval?
It's our position that, that they need to go and apply for a brand-new permit at this point.
Counsel, can I, while you're answering Justice Wall's question, can I ask just a basic housekeeping? Did you guys get a copy of this order from us to be prepared for the mootness?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so at least somebody got it. Great.
So, following up on, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My question is pretty quick. Why is what happened in Gray County even relevant here?
Just that, that there's, I don't think it is, to be honest with you. I think the issue is Finney County.
Thank you.
So to follow up, based on your argument that as a matter of law, this permit expired, why wouldn't this case then be moot?
We believe it is moot. We believe the petition for review is moot.
Oh, okay, so you're, you are taking a position that, that this is a moot case and we no longer have jurisdiction to hear it?
We're taking that position, but because we would like some finality on this, at the same time, if, if the court were so inclined to issue an opinion on the merits, we would invite that.
Well, so let me ask one more follow-up. So our mootness doctrines do speak about exceptions for cases of high public importance that are subject to repeatability. And I guess my question is, is this one of those circumstances? And I guess the worry would be if these permits expire as a matter of law after one year, you know, the issues may never get to a court. Do you see that? Does that make sense as a question?
I, I think so. It's, it's unclear to us as to whether or not this can be subject to repetition. And the reason is, is because if, if this matter goes back to Finney County and, and the Court of Appeals ruling is enforced, that would require this process to go, or the, the CUP to go before the Planning Commission, which it's never gone before, for a recommendation, and then go to the county commission for a final vote, including the county, before one of the county commissioners that represents Pierceville. And so we don't know as a practical matter, given that it's going to, before completely different bodies, including an elected body that time, whether the outcome's going to be the same. The CUP very well can be denied the second go-round.
Let me follow up with that because you conditioned that on embracing the rationale of the Court of Appeals. But if, if my math is right and my reading of the Finney County regulations is correct, the permit expired on July 20th, 2022. The Court of Appeals didn't issue its decision until February 10th of 2023. And under our case law, the Court of Appeals opinion goes away because it didn't have jurisdiction because the case was moot, unless one of the exceptions then would apply. So let me give you the hypothetical that if the Court of Appeals decision goes away too, does your answer change to Justice Steegles' question about whether this is subject to repetition?
It very well could be. And, and again, that's why we would, in that instance, we would ask for a decision on the merits.
Would it be subject to repetition if a party who knew they had an expiring conditional use permit simply took the additional step of asking for it to be renewed? And that, that seems to me to be the fundamental, the root problem of all this mootness discussion is just what, why wasn't the conditional use permit renewed?
So, I'm sorry, I could not hear that.
Why wasn't the conditional use permit renewed?
I, it's, we don't have the conditional use permit. I think that would be a question for, for Huber Sand.
In your, in, in your opening kind of statement to us, you referred to this as a mining operation. Did you, did you seek that kind, there's an exception that requires an additional step to be taken in the, in the, in the conditional use permit statutes that specify that mining operations are different and distinct from sand and gravel operations and other types of conditional use permits? Did you, did you seek to utilize that exception or was there ever, did the court ever deal with that? I couldn't find the court ever took that question up.
The, the court, the court didn't take that question up, but I, I will tell you that KSA 12-757, little A, so not subsection A, but little A, is the statute immediately following 757. And in, in that statute, it requires a majority, it, it essentially says that if, for, for a mining operation, it's got to be a majority vote of the governing body. Sand and gravel quarry is a mining operation. And, and there was no vote by a governing body in this instance. The, the CUP went before the BZA and only the BZA. The governing body in Finney County is the, is the county commission. And this, and this CUP never went before the governing body. So there was never a vote at all by the governing body. And so we believe that it does fail under 757 little A.
So it, let me ask you, just so I can understand, because you're the expert in this area, so I'm going to tap in to your knowledge. So the difference between, explain to me the difference between an amendment to a zoning regulation or a zoning code, so I guess a rezoning, and a special, special use or conditional use permit?
So a special use or conditional use permit, and those terms are used interchangeably essentially, allow for land to be put towards an otherwise prohibited use. And, and essentially that use is not allowed unless a CUP is issued and conditions that are imposed as part of that CUP are followed. A zoning amendment can be a number of things, you know, just amending the zoning regulation, whatever. But I will point out that the, the Court of Appeals' majority opinion in this case went through the analysis and, and, and essentially found, based analyzing Crumbacher and also referencing Manley, that this, that, that a CUP is the functional equivalent of a rezoning. And that the Manley case, inherent in the ruling in the Manley case was that a C, or that I guess an SUP in that case was a zoning amendment. And so they are diff, they, they are different functionally, but the court has analyzed this and said that, that they're the functional equivalent, that, that a CUP is the functional equivalent of a rezoning or zoning amendment, so it falls under the statute.
Okay, so let me, let me ask you this. When you were talking about a special use permit or a conditional use permit, you said something about unauthorized. Is that what you said?
An otherwise prohibited use.
Right, well then what's a variance?
So variance is, is a request to deviate from the zoning regulations. A lot of times, a, a variance is, for example, a, a height limitation in, in a particular zoning district. If they have, you can not have, you know, any building beyond, you know, above three stories, where you can get a variance to, to deviate.
What's the difference then between a special use or conditional use permit and a variance? Because they're both, you're saying they're both kind of unauthorized or violations? Because it's my understanding, okay, and I don't want to really talk about the past case law and extracting that sentence.
Oh, I would, I would love if we could avoid that.
Right, let's just, you know, because, you know, because we're just looking at the statutory language, okay? And so it's, it's my understanding that a special use of, a CUP, is that, a CUP is a use that is already conditionally authorized under the current zoning regulations, but a specific criteria that's already set forth in the zoning regulations have to be met. And meeting those, you have to have the approval of whoever the approval committee is that's designated. And it doesn't change or amend the regulation because the regulation says you can do this, but you gotta, you gotta do a few more things.
Yeah, and I, and I think the, the dissenting opinion kind of, in the Kansas Court of Appeals hit on this. But the, the difference is, in our opinion, that, in the majority opinion touched on this as well, is that CUPs aren't automatically granted. In fact, they're denied all the time.
Right.
And, and a CUP, essentially in zoning ordinances, there's a list of uses that, that might be possible. So there's, there's-
Contemplated.
Yes.
Contemplate.
But just because it's contemplated does not mean it's, it's automatic, far from it. And that-
But do you have to amend the regulation?
We believe, the position of the, of the case law in Kansas is that it is considered a zoning amendment. It is considered a rezoning.
And, and what are you relying on for that? And what do you rely on for that?
Crumbaker, Manley.
No, I don't want you to rely on those. I mean, what else do you rely on? Or is that all you have?
Well, the definition of zoning is, under Kansas statute, is that the regulation or restriction of uses of land. And certainly a CUP is a regulation or restriction on the uses of land. And you cannot have a use, like for example, sand and gravel quarry. Without a CUP, it is a prohibited use in that zoning district. You cannot have it. So you have to go through the process of applying for a CUP. The jurisdiction has to go through.
Why do we have conditional use permits? Then if it's the same thing as rezoning? Or an amendment?
I don't think it's always the same. I think there are differences where a CUP where a CUP is considered a rezoning, but a rezoning is not always considered a CUP.
Wait, slow that down and say it again.
Okay. There, every CUP is, as the court has analyzed, is considered a rezoning. There are, you can have a rezoning that is not a CUP. You can rezone property and have it not be a CUP.
Right, but if every CUP is a rezoning, why do we have CUPs?
That's the way the jurisdictions have decided to handle certain conditional uses that are otherwise prohibited without going through those additional steps.
I want to take you back to the mining statement that you made. These were competing motions for summary judgment, correct?
Yes.
It's my understanding that one of those uncontroverted facts was that in May of 2021, Huber submitted an application for a conditional use permit or CUP to the Board of Zoning Appeals, seeking approval from the board to operate a sand and gravel quarry on the property as an approved conditional use under the regulation. It's my understanding that was a a fact to which both parties agreed. Is that wrong?
That they submitted a CUP to the BZA?
For a sand and gravel quarry.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
You agree?
Yes. I'm running out of time here. One additional point I'd like to make is the reference to Crumbaker being dicta and that, well, the facts in Crumbaker were the zoning regulations applied, they had zoning regulations that applied the two-part process. That's a red herring because whether or not, well, first of all, they applied KSA 12-757 to to the zoning regulations and to the facts at issue in that case. And if all that mattered was what the zoning regulations say, because that's essentially the point, is well, the zoning regulations there match the statute. If all that matters is the zoning regulations, then there would be no reason to analyze the statute whatsoever. You could just go off the zoning, the local zoning regulations. But that's not what any of these courts have done. The three cases before this court and the Kansas Supreme Court, and the five cases that we cited in our brief from the Kansas Court of Appeals, each one of them has analyzed the statute in different parts of the statute, certainly. But they've always consistently applied KSA 12-757 to CUPs and SUPs. And the public has relied on those decisions, including American Warrior and Brian Price. And so we just ask that the majority ruling from the Kansas Court of Appeals be affirmed and based on based on the arguments asserted here today and also in the briefs. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you have.
See no questions. Thank you. Slow bar. You reserve three minutes.
Justice Miles, I'll start by answering your question. And I think you're correct in your reading of the zoning regulations for Fannie County that it would have expired. The reason whether or not this is moot is that this is repeatable. Every conditional use permit in the reading the reading that the Court of Appeals gave to Crumbaker and its progeny and what the what American Warrior is advocating for creates a situation where every conditional use permit that has been issued since 1995 has failed to follow statute and is invalid. So this is hugely important. I think it's also evidenced by the amicus briefs that you received from the League of Municipalities and from the Fannie County, or not the Fannie, the county, the Kansas County Association. There are a lot of counties and a lot of municipalities that are using similar framework based on the authority we believe was given to them in 12755. I do want to also address, before I move on, 757A. This is not, mining operation is defined by Chapter 49. We disagree with that reading. That's, Chapter 49 talks about surface mining, and that's a completely different operation than sand quarry. That's a different set of regulations and a different set of rules. And I think that's a misinterpretation of 757A to say that the sand quarry is a mining operation under that definition.
Counsel, would you agree that the potential mootness problem could have been avoided had the applicant simply asked for the permit to be renewed?
That is, yes.
So we wouldn't even need to talk about whether a prudential exception might apply if applicants who desire to see this issue litigated to the end took the trouble of getting a renewed permit?
Right, of course. But as I can't remember which of the justices pointed this out, the ruling came after the expiration date initially to begin with.
Well, why wouldn't a party, I mean, if they understand that their permit to do what they want to do is going to expire, why would they not?
Justice, in all candor, I am not 100% confident that they haven't reapplied. I don't know that for sure. I consulted with co-counsel regarding that. He was not aware that they did. That's a procedure that they can do without counsel and often do without attorneys. So I can't say with 100% confidence that they didn't. I don't think that they did. I think I would have heard if they have.
As far as we know.
As far as we know.
Harkening back to Justice Wall's question, if if they desired tomorrow to start the operations, they have no legal authority to do so, regardless of how this case comes out.
Sure, that would be correct. Yes.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to both counsel for your arguments in this case. The court will take this appeal under advisement.